Welcome to Lowermoreland Township. Board of Commissioners stated an advertised August 13th, 2024 monthly meeting. Please rise for the flag. Good evening. Before we start, I'd like to welcome everyone to our Board of Commissioners meeting this evening. Once again, I'd like to start off by saying how important it is for your public input and your comments and your concerns. They are very, very important to all of us. To address the board this evening, would you please come to the podium up here in the front of the room? State your name and address for the record. In the interest of everyone's time, and you have a full agenda this evening, we can engage in debates or long dialogues. As such, we would like you to please keep comments to three minutes if you can. Please avoid redundancy. If someone has brought up a comment that you agree with prior to speaking, you can simply state your name and address and express that you agree with others that have spoken before you this evening, and that will be noted on the records. Please comment on the agenda item that is in front of the board at this, at the time that it is being addressed. If you have any additional comment or concern, the opportunity to speak will be during the public participation for non-agenda items. The board, chair, vice chair, Board of Commissioners may have discussions with the board and staff after that time. If we could provide the public with a quick answer, we will do so or direct our township staff to follow up regarding any concerns or comments after the meeting. Finally, may we please ask that everyone be respectful and kind. Thank you very much. So we'll start off. The Chair, please welcome Commissioner and Vice Chair, Joseph Capellano, Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, President Carrots. The first item on my agenda tonight is the probationary appointment of a police officer. In June, the Board of Commissioners authorized conditional offers to three new officers. Two of the three were appointed to their positions in a probationary status in July. Now, the former officer, Joseph Capellano, will attend the board's August meeting, so his probationary appointment may be considered. His first day was July 13th, 2024. Judge Murdison swore him in at the C of U. Any discussion from the board on this? No. I would motion to approve Resolution Number 2443, appointing Joseph Capellano as a probationary police officer in Lowermoreland Police Department. Sorry.
The motion's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2443, appointing Joseph Capellano as a probationary officer in the Lowermoreland Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No votes on these commissioners, the ayes have.
Congratulations.
Just want to welcome Officer Joseph Capellano here tonight. He's with his brand-new wife, Kelly. We hold the Bible for him. He's got some family and friends here. Joseph completed our competitive process, became highly recommended by our detective department that did his background. One great thing that I think should be bonded to our community in our police department is Joseph chose us over another area of the evening, so we're very happy to have him. Comes with an Associate's degree in criminal justice from the Community College of Philadelphia. He also served four, over four years in the Philadelphia Police Department, most recently with 35th District. We are very happy to have him here with us tonight and welcome him and his wife up. And Judge Marge, he gets one now.
I, Joseph Capellano.
I, Joseph Capellano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Township of Lowermoreland.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Township of Lowermoreland.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity and integrity.
I will discharge the, sorry. I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity and integrity.
And I pledge to uphold, obey, and enforce the law.
And I pledge to uphold, obey, and enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race, color, sex.
To a person's race, color, sex.
Religious creed, sexual orientation.
Religious creed, sexual orientation.
Age, national origin, ancestry.
Age, national origin, ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
I will obey the rules, regulations, policies, and procedures.
I will obey the rules, regulations, policies, and procedures.
Governing sworn members of the Lowermoreland Township Police Department.
Governing sworn members of the Lowermoreland Township Police Department.
Congratulations.
Joe Stanley, friends, you can follow the officers will take you downstairs and fix you photos and everything. Next item on my agenda for this evening is the curfew. So we engaged in a agency to help us achieve our accreditation order this year in March. And to maintain that, we sought their services for the next three years. The accreditation process and policing helps keep us on the top of the line in the policy, procedures, training, and everything that's occurring in police work. It keeps us. So it helps make us a better police department in our training, our policy and procedures, which are currently evaluated on a yearly basis. And then the process takes another three years after that. And during that process, each and every year, we have to prove everything we're doing. So this makes us the best police department we can be for our community. And with that, we get recognition from the head of the police chief's association. So we are one of only 170 police departments in the state of Pennsylvania that are accredited. And we are only one of 20 police departments in McFulmer County. There'll be over 40 that are accredited. And so this is a great process, and whereas it brings us great pride. So we sought that same group that helped us accomplish this, we sought a contract with them to help us maintain that over this three-year period. So we feel it's very important to maintain that and continue to be the best police department we can for our community. So this is a very important thing for the police department and we wish to, again, maintain this for very many years. But this, this process is for a three-year period.
And so the reason that we have this in front of the board is that the overall cost for this total three-year proposal was $41,000. It's something that we had successfully in the budget to help finish out the initial accreditation. And then obviously, this, as Chief Smith was describing, is to help us maintain everything that had gone into that effort. So for the 2024 budget, it would add $6,500, which is something that I am comfortable with in our capital fund. And then if agreeable to the board overall, and this is something that I think we're very much recommending you do approve, then I would be able to incorporate each of the annual, or semi-annual payments into your subsequent capital budgets between now and 2026. So from year to year, like this year, we have the $6,500 expense. Then we will be at $13,500 next year, and then $14,000 for the final, with a final payment of $7,000 due after the onsite assessment, which would be the three-year accreditation. So that's functionally how we would take the proposal and put that into your budget.
And that's for a three-years, for a three years. So it'll bring us to March of 2027, when we give everything. Any discussion from the board?
Is this a service that we would just be engaging with ongoing? So after three years, what comes after that?
And for that, again, it's another three-year period of accreditation. So it would be something that we would look into then. The hopes are too, though, at some point that when we become functioning enough, that we may not need as many of their services. So for the third year billing, that we use them on an hourly basis to maintain it over this three-year period, but that's to receive the full three-year contract with them, or at least options for that. And then hopefully after that, our civilians say, oh, well, officers are a little more adept at handling what we need to do for this, making the proofs that we need to for this each and every year. And it would be something that we could hopefully absorb with the police department itself, if we're a police staff. And not have to do exactly that. And just.
A major credit to the department. Scott, while in his lieutenant's role, took on a major component of this internally, as well as returning to our training corps there. Often in larger agencies, you would actually see a specific officer assigned to this task. So some of these full kind of W-2 earnings being the basis of maintaining accreditation. But we're comparatively at a smaller agency, that $13,000 to $14,000 range is what we felt was an appropriate scale for the local.
And we did see, yeah, with a lot of other agencies, they're also offering these services. And with our experience with this one, what we provide, please, we think this is the best one.
I'm in agreement. I think it's worthwhile, program to take back, you know, with all the police accreditation. This is certainly, I don't know, you know, recommended, something that was continued. But I think maybe, I don't want to speak pretty short, but his comment, you know, as much as we can take on going forward, you know, to put the necessary steps in place to be able to lessen the doubt that we rely on. There are parties that do work that maybe that we can, that we can do. And I, I've been involved in similar things, so I know there's certainly not that, you know, we would need that for. But as much as, you know, after this cycle that we worked towards, we've been ourselves sustaining ourselves.
Any questions from the public?
I want to thank you for answering my questions earlier. And the key to this that I cannot understand, besides documentation, is that you actually physically have approved they following these steps and they approved the, your site.
Correct, yes, they have to come out to the police department. And there are over, it's over 140 proofs that we have to do each and every year to show that we're doing it. So many of those proofs have 10, 15 steps of what we have to do to do that. Part of it is maintaining our facility in a certain way that meets their standards, making sure officers have all the equipment and utilize equipment. Any policy that we have, that we say we follow, we have to prove that we follow within our written reports. And bottom line video, we have to show differently than just the few of those things. Some of its pictures, some of its reports, some of its memo handling, some of its different training documents. But all of that stuff is included into that, that's certainly what they call it.
And if there are recommended changes in policies and procedures, what?
They do that on a yearly basis and an ongoing basis. So there was, since we already were credited in March, there was already seven different policy changes that have come through that. And it's again, just kind of making us cutting-edge and one of the, you know, the best, high-performance police departments.
Chief, the follow-up on this, on Ruth's comment in her conversation on words. You also spoke to me about, it's not just about the officers in the department. It's the department as a whole, even the employee, this, this morning, honestly. Everyone is helped, so in a certain standard.
Correct, our civilians go through more training than any other civilian in the police departments, so that they can help us maintain that. And we have a group, a group of civilian employees that will also really grasp this and then kind of learn that they're with us and help us with this process. But they get the same kind of training and code and help them maintain all those things.
So with this being said, regarding everyone's comment on the board, do you, have you spoken to any other departments as to how long they've maintained or utilized one of these services?
Some do it on a ongoing basis. They do it every single year because they don't want to utilize their officers. As Chris said, I took a big run of this, and I hope everyone's a lieutenant, but I'll do that. But it could be something else upcoming. So I think it is something we can maintain or import. But as Chris said, there are oftentimes there's a part that has that soul that I feel. But I think the way we've done it is we have a lot of different officers that have some unique skill that can help us develop. It's going to be, we spread that work really down, have to utilize this scopeway in an ongoing every single year. But maybe use a mental card that needs and help those right before the accreditation process, which the burden is very thin when it does this pay.
And then maybe care back.
And then.
Thank you, Chief.
By needing a credit or value added to like get extra funding from certain entities out there for being credited or?
Not, not what I have seen. I will say it's, you know, there's unseen liability reduction with this because everything we're doing that they said it's having proof that we're doing it. So lawsuits oftentimes are lessening and the ability for people to find errors or mistakes in what we're doing are less because of this process. Or it helps us maintain everything on the top line. That would be the unseen costs that we can reduce quickly through this.
What I'm hearing, Chief, is this is the way I do it, that it's the first three errors.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the board?
Nothing to hear, nothing to say online. I would like a motion, I would like to get a motion on the rest agreement between L and EAS.
Motion's been moved and seconded to authorize the agreement between L and EAS. L E A S. Hold it in favor, just say the last I say, aye. What was, no, any votes? No votes?
Next item on my agenda for the evening is Peter Fire slash EMS Intervening. As requested by Board of Commissioners, the stakeholders for the Hunter Valley Fire, Burnout Fire Company, Burnout Fire, in the Lowermoreland Township met on Monday, July 29. Hunter Valley Fire Company, Burnout Fire Company leadership has lost a man prior, and that to which consensus. While there was an agreement between the Hunter Valley Fire Company President Colbert and Hunter Valley Fire Company Chief Milner, Burnout Fire Company President Brown and Burnout Fire Company Chief Shutter to select Fetter's Mill Fire Rescue. The Hunter Valley Fire Company members ultimately did not authorize their leadership to proceed with this name. This resulted in a meandering conversation with the stakeholder group. This discussion yielded unanimous consensus to still proceed with the Fetter's Mill Fire Rescue. Please remember, this does not change the Hunter Valley Fire Company and Burnout Fire Company names today. It does modify the future organizational structure prepared by Chief Shutter Maker, envisioned in the governmental cooperation arena. The Lowermoreland Burnout Fire and EMS Department is the municipal department serving as the umbrella organization for these coordinated efforts. A bubble for the Fetter's Mill Fire Rescue will be inserted between L and EAS and will serve as a future fire and EMS entity serving our communities. With this step completed, we can reorientate our focus towards determining what's necessary for our response levels to meet the MFPA 17 points standard accepted by the Board of Commissioners. This will also allow the budget concepts to be built out for the future organizations, so funding arrangements can be discussed with the department. We will also continue our pursuit to build a new facility to house these services. Discussion between the board.
I'll start. So I'm not in favor of this, I'll just put that out there and start, but I will explain myself. So throughout this whole process, and first I will recognize what we've been talking about, this is a long process. It has been a long process, we've worked on this for decades, right? In some iteration, we will continue to work on it for decades to come, to make sure that is the best it can be. I have found that with this particular step of process, figuring out this name, you know, the spirit of doing this was to create a fresh start, right? That was what we were saying. And given the way that this process has gone, I don't find that the start that it is starting is really that fresh. It doesn't seem like, although we technically got to consensus, it doesn't seem like there is actually enthusiasm behind this particular name. And I think a lot of that is because the work that's still to come is, is still to come. The formation and the understanding of what exactly this bubble that we're naming is going to be. And I personally don't think that a name now is going to hinder that work. And I think that when that work starts to formulate, starts to come together, that momentum can carry us to another discussion where there is a lot more enthusiasm that we're doing. And as a result, we can come to a name, whatever that name happens to be. It might be the same exact, right? I don't think we're, I don't think we need to do this right now. And I think it puts us in a position to pick a name that not everyone's going to use. Where they say, you gotta pick a name. And I don't, I just don't think that's necessary right now. Again, I don't think it stops what we're doing. I don't think it should stop what we're doing. Because I think what we're doing is the right stuff, right? Everything else that comes after this is the right steps forward. But picking a name right now doesn't seem necessary, and so for that, I'm against it. I will, I don't intend to endorse this particular name at this time.
Appreciate your comments. Any comments you can board?
I'm sorry, Chief, do you want to speak to?
Well, speak to the board first, because what I'm going to say, also, Chief and the board.
I'm just wondering, you know, two strong points. Why you feel it's not the target that we need to run.
So let me give a little background, and I don't want to get my opinion. So as you guys know, I'm not doing the fire service here in Lowermoreland, which we've been doing for 25 years. We've been dealing with this issue since 2008 going forward. Right now, we are looking to bring the two fire companies together with fresh start, fresh end of the name. With that being said, I agree, Fetter's Mill was not my first choice. Not sure if I love the name, but it's made as fresh and separate from Burnout Fire Company, and that's what it's about. Allow it to come together under a new organization to give them a fresh start. Why don't we get a name now? Because as of January 1, we're going to be operating as one-handed operation. The two 501(c)(3)'s will still maintain. They'll have their board directors, they'll continue to function as they do. But operation and the street, we want to be uniformed and united, and that's what the soon name will box. That's why I'm in favor, not to put it on the side of a truck, in that nature, but to allow the organization to truly come together. When it comes to regards to Burnout Fire Company, they're on board, they're good with Fetter's Mill. Same thing with Burnout Fire, it was voted by their council, I believe, last week, and approved in the United States committee. Regarding Hunter Valley Fire Company, it was a slip of the tongue. Don't remember the exact numbers off the top of my head, but something went wrong there, or something that I'm sure. I don't remember the exact names. With that being said, out of the responding numbers, it was still getting exactly the way they're going to be. Still, there's been some. There's been some diversity between the two departments regarding the everyday operations. United States we put back, and then we become the government board. This will allow that to operate on a level as they've been, they've been in the options. Any other questions from the board, comments from the board? If not, I'll open it up to Chief Shutter, maybe.
I think, Commissioner, you know, you summed it up pretty well. This has been a very lengthy process. It's probably been the most frustrating point is my start in this position and getting to this point. But I think in my opinion, in order to move forward, it's imperative that we take this step and stop kicking it down the street. The longer we take it down, the longer it takes us to come together. We got to start at some point and come to a common goal. I know everybody has their own, you know, belief in what the name should be. I've been in myself, speaking a number of times to both organizations. We've had a number of meetings with chief officers for both organizations. We've had meetings, we heard in 29, with all the representatives. And they came out unanimously with this name. And again, I tried to stay out of the name, I'm a hillside, I don't live in the community, I thought it was important for them to come up with it. But it came to an impasse, where we're not going to get hands-on, that trial was committed. And the consensus was the move with the Fetter's Mill. You know, we talked about the truck, trucks are an issue that's been discussed back and forth. Personally, I'd like to see the truck now with a new one, when it comes from the factory, which is going to be in a few weeks. I'll talk a little bit about that in my report. But there goes further down the road, that currently right now, the Hunter Valley Fire Company has a number of turnout here sets around the water. It's being held up right now as they wait to see what the name, new name is going to be. Because it's costly to keep changing this. So if they were to take what they were getting right now, that they're buying, probably a $6,000 to $7,000 ensemble to require fighters. And then he's always put on the list for, not only safety reasons, but to identify which one they come from. So if they stick with the HVC currently, with gates on it later down the road, they're going to have to pay to change that. Certain costs, again, are starting to add up as we go. We're trying to save costs in the long run by accomplishing this goal that we're trying to do tonight, to start setting the stage for the future of our own purchases, and we do have a lot of ours associated with it. So it's important from that aspect. The other thing that you know, we're going to be changing the number, the long term. We're going to be going with the number 19 for the system. And that's part of this package as well. We weren't quite ready for that yet because of some of these things we've talked about for the time of year and so forth. But we're looking to do that by between November and January 1. That is the extension, we gave them the hypothesis goal of trying to achieve. So my position is, I think it's important that we establish this name now and move forward and get off this step and allow us to start planning out the future and to allow the group to work together, to come to show us what their needs are and how we're going to accomplish this in the long term. But if we don't start somewhere, and again, like I mentioned, we keep kicking the thing down the road, we're never going to get anywhere. It's got to be a start that I have to certainly.
Want to talk about the badge?
Probably I'd come up with a demonstration purpose. Seal or patch that we would use as the group. And within that, I've actually incorporated. It's a multi-cross, it's a symbol of the fire department services, it's Fetter's Mill Fire Rescue. We've incorporated the Hunter Valley Fire Company establishment date, the Burnout Fire Company establishment date, and then our new organization establishment date. And our new numbers that are associated back to 19 represents the fires side, the 319 represents the EMS side. We both, we do both, we're a multi, for a service agency. And then we took the Fetter's Mill bridge and just kind of like, just get something in there. It's not an artist, so it was just something for representation purposes. So that's kind of one of the ideas we were looking at, we thought would be a common to bring the two together into one. And I think it's kind of, I think, Commissioner Miller, you wanted to have the idea about the bridge before. Another came up on the lean, so that's why I started that beginning.
And Mark, without the name now, that prevents operationally, with the people work with, with 19, with the changes, everyone makes the adjustment, correct?
That's one of the obstacles, but there's going to be a number of obstacles that we start to look at this consolidation from the legal aspects to the different makeups and the different boards that will happen, how things will change in the future, how we come together. The entity has to be established for us to build it out. Once it's there, then we start to work down those little pieces that have to all come together to make it one. And it's not going to happen real fast. It takes time to do that. But, you know, I'm watching what our partners in Uppermoreland are doing right now. They're kind of going through a similar situation, and it's a little bit more radical. But they are following the same issues and the same obstacles that we are, and they're trying to accommodate. There's a number of things that have to happen at the state level. There's issues with insurance we have to address, that's a big one, make sure our folks are covered. The workers come, like building. Workers come, like building insurance, doing use of the equipment is a huge one, even as we stand today. Chris and I have been working very hard to try and get that resolved. We think we have what we need to do in the meantime, but that ultimate end goal, which the consultant we talked to said. That's a piece of the puzzle that's got to happen, that's one thing I'm going to work towards, and that's get this done now, but ultimately, everything's going to be designed around it.
Right, and it's at some point where we've got broadly enough, like, big answers to those things, not necessarily the specific plan, but enough to be able to allow us to start the budgeting process. To be able to give the board and the community the chance to see, here's what your status quo is, but understanding that status quo might have. Uh, certain operations deficiencies at this point, and then what things may look like in the interim period and start to work towards some of those mutual operations goals. And then also what your cost would be in the the long run with this thing fully built out. Um, and just that's where, at this point, it's been impossible to do that test, we know how much everybody wants to see that. But without some answers to those questions, it's a foolish test.
So operationally, uh, it's January one, whenever it can start to operate under new name, new number, new grade of all signs, uh, new structure. But the both fire companies continue to operate separately until there's some other decision later.
Right, there's a hierarchy of the uh, command structure that will be changed for the overall organization. But those folks that are in charge of Hunt Valley and Hunt Valley still remain in that that piece. I just have supervision and oversight and responsibility to those.
One moving in for budget saving, and I've always pronounced it in far as we can. And that's coming in, uh, Hunts Valley Station Eight. We've been talking about this for months and. Almost a year, it's interesting, with us. Burnout is eleven, so the nineteen. It's all makes sense to take this step forward. I'm very much in favor of moving forward. As long as I've been on the board, we've been talking about this. I know change is very, very difficult for everyone involved. But uh, this step, uh, to unify those fire companies is is very important.
And as your reporter, I I actually am joint chief of both municipalities. And as Commissioner Canelli mentioned, as the one that we can before Burnout and Barrows, they did go down this one, except for the name. Unanimous at Burnout, that's correct. I'm definitely I was not. But it's got to be different, there's some folks who are over there, so I think it's like three or twelve for us, please do that, okay?
I think a lot of questions, will the E P R be just say, will it be? Uh, change altogether, or just adding new?
As we progress, there's been things, we're actually pricing out the cost of changing the lettering on the year, and they have shields on there, but I swear it's. Burnout sometimes have a bad decals, but nobody's changed, we're all set, thank God. Uh, but everything comes with costs. And again, my.
Conscious, you know, of our revenue.
We'll be, as we get into budget saving, we'll be directing to organizations to put pension, put in some type of rebranding by now. And request some funds through that, so we have the things we're trying to accomplish that. But it's an attrition, which we start to replace things with each other, that's how I envision it. I do the organization, I'm talking to Chief Millman and his staff, they would like to change everything every one time and get it done. We're going to do this, in fact, I'm waiting to see what happens tonight, to see what we're putting along with, here it's all order. Uh, Burnout Fire Company, they've been prepared to do whatever needs to be done. But again, I I believe they're looking at, as we attrition change out here, then we will replace everything we've said we need for. That could be something, change it after, actually.
Yeah, any comments from the board? Any comments from the board? Just in case, please come on.
Please, I have a question, sleep, Burnout. Providing what really is on.
So there's problems, but if you're looking.
I have a question, please, I did.
Yes, they serve Burnout and Barrows and Long Island Township.
That's all, right, right, that's it?
No, they provide usually to surrounding counties as well.
They do, they go to Agington, they go to Rocklands, they go to Fox County, not, they do.
Uh huh.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Oh, who do they serve?
They. They being.
Gotcha, he has, who does Burnout and Fire Company serve? I listed off some of the municipalities that basically.
Okay, so your position in Burnout and what is it?
I'm assistant chief.
You're assistant chief of Burnout, EMS, you're also a firefighter?
I'm also a firefighter.
So you're the assistant chief in the Burnout and Fire Department, correct?
Burnout and Fire Company.
Fire Company, okay, so. You know my stance on this? I think it's fair to the taxpayers that we see a whole financial picture before I think anything is done. In this matter, changing the name is, they say, the first step, but I think the first step is a financial picture. To see how much money our taxpayers here, this room, the value of what attempts to develop, we can pay for this joint venture, if it ever happens. Because the borough doesn't know if they'll have the funds ready for this merger. Okay, so what if the merger never happens? Here we are talking about a name, does that name go away? And it and it becomes like the valley again?
So Chuck, that's a lot of speculation for you.
Well, I just asked you questions.
I appreciate your comments on this. What occurs if the merger wasn't going to, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, if the merger does not happen, what happens?
So there's four entities involved, long as you're aware, they're not the borough, there's Burnout and Fire Company, there's Hunt Valley, there's Long Island Township. Yeah, and Burnout and Fire Company, a bunch of residents of Long Island Township as well.
Well, I get that all the time, it's accountable, I I will.
Exactly, that is mine, I'm a member of Burnout and Fire Company, but I'm a resident of Long Island.
Right, sure.
As you're.
Right, right, yes.
So with that being said, if one of the entities says they don't want to participate, that's fine. We're going to have to move forward, provide policy, people.
Low water for Huntington Valley, correct, not for Burnout, if they can't participate, ones want to have to move forward, rather than others, correct?
Chuck, I can't speak for Burnout, because as of right now, they're in the game, they're in, and they're in support of this.
Well, I was at the meeting, there was questions from council, it it, you know, when they say it was unanimous, it wasn't as unanimous as they think, there was a lot of, um. You know, discussion back and forth, what they did decide to come up with, the name change, they voted on it. And the vice president of the council said, I wouldn't put that emblem on the fire truck, as we said. And. Right, they were all in support of it, but with that, that that mean, you know, think about, why did he say that? You know, why would he say something like that, you know, and 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 I and I agree, you know, everybody here wants to move forward, but there's loyalty here.
Remains.
Okay, I know, but in a game show, remember when Mr. Brian said this in the game show, this is the taxpayer's money, John.
And I want you to go, and you're debating.
I'm not debating, I'm not debating.
The whole conversation.
It's back, okay, backs, okay, public comment, that, that, I attended that meeting, did he, so, yeah?
I know.
All right, okay, right, okay, so, but I'm just saying, and I'm asking these questions, we don't have an answer for it yet, but if we had a financial thing in front of us. I think it would be a lot of.
And and Mr. Rek, we'll get you the answer if you want. Like I said in the beginning of the meeting, we'll get back to you on that, and if you agree, we'll get back to you on that. Yeah, we'll get back.
But there's also loyalty for the men in Woodville, the Hunt Valley Fire Department, hundred thirteen years, I believe it was, they don't. Hundred thirteen years, and we're just going to take this. Save on you, if you don't, save on you.
Thank you for the comments, Mr. Rek. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the board, Laura, Kell, Fran, all on? And they were going to be in house.
Just want to say that I am not, sorry, follow around, thirty, I'm five, shut your job. I just don't understand why a name has to come to, is there going to be a D V I, are they, since we're using two E I Ns?
So we want to be. So what it is, an operational underneath, what they're going to start operating as, that way, everybody can be uniformed, but we're going to be on team, three on team with the. That's what we're looking to implement as of January one, of course.
Okay, so at that point, though, I kind of agree, what happens if they don't, and what is this going to impact us, when we know what our taxes and that comes to?
So currently, your taxes aren't changed by this, we're operating with this issue's budget, they're going to have to act going forward, based on the recommendations on Chief Sheldon Maker, that the services and protections will need. We want to anticipate a budget from the on the fall to reflect those needs and see them whatever come in this period.
Okay, just stating, I'm not a fan of this, but I am against something that has to need or re-operate these two, they do great jobs. To move together, I don't think it's necessary right now, that's my thing.
Appreciate it, but I.
Hi, my name is Rich Oldman, wasn't aware of this, I'm just a question I had, so is this, um, like, the. The fire department, does it enhance it by doing this? What is, what's the benefit for doing that?
So goal is, what's going on, since the nineteen seventies, we're doing this in Long Island, it's great, we started with three hundred thousand. We're now down to thirty thousand, so we're operating at a center percent, well, I went to the door, fifteen years ago, that's uh. With that being said, it's harder now, these companies can provide a valid fund and access to seven to ten or sixteen. By bringing these two entities together, it's our goal to help to enhance their service, provide better protection for them. Currently, Burnout provides fire and EMS service to, well, they're the primary EMS, second. Think about it, provides primary fire service to.
So does that mean you're then bringing more full time, people versus volunteer?
So currently, Burnout has full time staff. Huntington Valley Fire Company is predominantly volunteer with the starting program. And we're going to need to evaluate the needs of communities and then go forward with the point in which Chief Sheldon knows what they're moving out, and if there's more information, she presumably.
Yeah, so I would just say, as long as it's not, you know, if if it's not lessening. Right, there's, yeah, and then, of course, you need to juggle the cost and. At thirty nine forty, you have to.
What I love about twelve thousand, only twenty four seven, three sixty five, and absolutely, but the budget isn't that, that, or this time, you're going to show the exact status, we can product that. So we have to work and find that behind the line, to provide the best possible service. Any other questions, any else, any comments, or? I believe Laura has already.
Hi, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, um, I have said before that I completely understand the concept of ex- uh, exploring the idea of a merger. Um, that said, I'm confounded by this process and the order in which we are adjusting it. Um, I have never heard of a business, because that's essentially what we're trying to to do, we're trying to create a new business, for lack of a better. Or organization, I've never heard of an organization trying to create itself and say, oh, God, we can't come up with a name. Um, so we can't possibly move on with this discussion, when what we really need to be talking about is. The feasibility, finances, staffing, equipment, uh, you know. There there's so much more to tackle that are going to be a lot more sensitive and a lot more difficult than a name. Um, I'm questioning both the board, our township leadership, the facilitator of this. If if we can't, if if we can't see that this is a stumbling point. And say, okay, you know what, we got to set this aside, because we're not moving forward. And I I although I don't understand how we can't move forward without establishing a new name, um, that does not sound logical to me. Um, I'm questioning, it's making me doubt, honestly, the capability of everyone involved to push this forward. Um. I don't understand why we're not just saying, forget it, I mean, I heard Joe in the beginning say. Um, well, this isn't going to change anything for the time being, Huntington Valley is still Huntington Valley, Burnout is still Burnout, then wh- why? Um, if we're just, we already established that we're Station Nineteen or something, how is that not enough? Um, I I'm very nervous about the potential of getting this moving forward if the folks in charge can't. Happily, actually, or enthusiastically join together and come up with a new name. And and if it's a stumbling point, and if it's hurting or in some way impeding. Forward progress, then maybe it's time to take it off the plate for now, until some camaraderie has been built, and until we see that this is even a feasible. Process. Um, I I'm just, I'm just stumped, uh, this sounds almost elementary at this point, and. Uh, I I just feel like, and we hired, we made this hire, right, and we're paying seventy five percent of this hire, and he needs, he has more important work to do. Than establishing a name, I I don't know how you don't see that. Thanks for allowing me to um, share my thoughts.
So let me just clarify a little bit there, if we can correct a couple things, right now, the new station number has not been established. That's what this name and station number is tied to, we get, will be nineteen plus Fetter's Mill Fire Rescue. Which we're looking to implement, to bring that unity together between the two departments. Them operating independently causes some conflict at times, bringing them together under one organization, I believe will smooth that out with time. That's why I am in favor of dealing with Station Nineteen and the Fetter's Mill Fire Rescue, hotting them, operating basically as a D V I, as is done in operation under that.
I I hear that, um, backing up, I think you said. Something about the name bringing people together or moving, it's just not doing that, clearly. It's not doing it, we can be called Station Nineteen, do we have to be called anything other than that? It's just a thought, I'm just looking at it from a big point of view, we have plenty of time to come up with a name when we know the merger is happening. We have plenty of time for that, this is not how an organization gets formed, the, I I I I'm. I'm just, as as a resident, I'm sincerely concerned about what we're investing our time, money, and energy into, if this is where we're stuck. I I I feel really passionately about it, I'm I'm just, I don't feel like the folks in charge of this are equipped to get the work done. Because we haven't even started the actual hard work.
Appreciate your comments.
So I I think what's what's really challenging for me in this moment is that, you know, I so I have not seen yet, like. Recommendations, like fully baked recommendations, because they have been, they're in progress, we're working on those. But there seems to be this sort of foregone conclusion that this is what we're doing, like, as early as January. But that's not anything we've been discussing, that's not anything that has been.
Can you clarify that, what are?
So you mentioned a couple times about how January first, operating this name and purchase of new logos, new jackets, new this, new that, putting the logo on the truck. You know, all that merging these two actual, like, organizations together, operating on the single thing. If the goal of putting this this intergovernmental agreement together was to allow for us to build recommendations for what we're doing forward. Those recommendations seem, at least for some of us, to be already set in stone, we know what we're doing. But that's not for everybody, right? I'm not a part of that group that has, that believes that this is exactly what we need to do. And I think what what again, what challenges me is that plan isn't built. So we're sort of barreling forward in this thing that we know we need to do, but we don't have plan, there's no, this is what we're doing this year, so we're doing it three years, we're going to go five years. And we haven't discussed those, we haven't talked about that, we don't even know what the options are. And so, again, to to take the name, to to vote on this thing, set some emotion, one single force, that, like, we don't know all the. We don't know all of these, it can go, we have a topic, and that's why I think voting for this now feels ahead of where we are in this process. And I don't understand why, I still understand why it's going to hinder our ability to, like, form formulate, like, here is the flow, here's why this, this is, here's how this happens. Here is step by step, the book gets us there. And at some point down that road. We need to name this organization so we can perform it. And again, that that would, and I I, that's not what everyone is saying, it's not everyone's comment, but that is. That it just feels like a, an out of place step.
So sixteen years, we've been working so hard. Three studies have been developed, all indicating that the two part engine should work. And that's what's worked with other units. This game continues, four months ahead, I would say, three years ago. Shot down by one of the organizations, choice very common stages because they didn't feel comfortable finding each other's internal sections. Right along with that, that's what I'm thinking. With that being said, I'm looking at all information, processing it from my seat up there, plus seeing insights in the daily operations, getting the streets with the requirements. Gives me a very unique insight into this. I believe we do need the name to allow them to operate as one, come together, begin and process and unify. And that's what we still find is need to do to serve both needs of all attention. With that being said, Federal's North Fire Rescue was unanimously approved by LMBA. It was agreed to by Brown and Fire Company, also by Huntington Valley's admin, meaning the chief and fellows, saying they're on board with that. They have split membership though. So out of the four parties, bringing the two of them on board. Stand with decision at this point, we want to support that. As I can see, there's some diversity amongst the board right here with a little bit of non-contribution. And then you need to figure that out. Like I mean, the correct step is the opening, unified the two, and those who are there for the right reason will remain, make the department strong. That's my personal opinion.
See, I. I don't really care if the Trump says Santa Claus, right? I don't. Um, but you got, I said this two months ago. We're, the tail's wagging at all, right? You got no financial commitment from either organizations. Our organization being a level more intensive tax therapy, several million dollars for a fire truck that's coming in. But yeah, our own fire department doesn't agree with the name, right? I just don't, again, I don't care what the Trump says, but talking to, you said we're split groups with Huntington Valley Fire Department. I was told by Ron, I told you they hate them. They don't want them. They want Huntington Valley and Burnathon Fire Services or LMBA. They want inclusion of existing departments, not a whole new name, right? Um. I have to have the support, I have to support our people hopping on the back of that truck every day, right? And that's personally how I feel. And the taxpayers, they posted three million dollars in the ones, so we. It's a lot of cash and no financial commitment. Regardless of Lou Burnathon, they helped us tremendously, but no financial commitment towards that big nut that we put out right now, right here on the table.
You were referring to Brown and Brown towards the foundations for the trucks, which we have.
There's, you know, future trucks and future equipment, which again, like I want to be perfectly clear, like I'm not doubting that this is a direction that we should be going. I think it is the direction we should be going in. What I don't know yet is how we get there and because of that. I feel like I'm voting for a plan for an eventuality that I don't understand till we get to yet. I don't understand what the like future that one group, all kids, one group to back out and with the financials, we don't have that yet. We don't have an understanding of what that might like. Even just understanding the might is would would make this whole process a bit easier for everybody to find. Because we we know what we're building. Right now, we're just deciding to build something and not everybody can see it as a good thing. And that is creating, that that's what's, that's what is creating the the sense of uncertainty here.
So let me clarify, let's say, get the Burnathon Fire Company draw set. Let's say Huntington Valley Fire Company draw set, say Burnathon Fire Company draw set. That leaves us as law and intelligence. We have a duty to provide wiring and assets to residents here. And provide those life-saving services, saving the lives, of course. With that being said, every organization is done. They're A, contract. Or B, we form our own new organization, drive those services and much larger costs, which we do not want to do.
I I I totally agree. And we would still need a plan and we still need to understand what the what the potential plans are to 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 understand what it is that works for you. And it's just, it just said, it just feels like in in August of twenty twenty four, rather than October of twenty twenty four, or even November twenty twenty four. To make this decision without understanding what we're trying to build, that that's what to me feels like. We're setting our, make our sights on a theme that not everybody is super thrilled with and even you said like not not super thrilled with, right? We should be super thrilled about this. We should be excited to be doing this. And I think we're all excited by the opportunity to like make these services better for the long term, that along from investment. But like right now, this name isn't building to that future. It's it's setting it into motion like this discussion. Which is again, really elongating this process and getting in the way of things that I think really do matter. Like what does this actually build up? Like what is the three to five year plan? How do, and how do we know?
And I think that will be fleshed out over the next several months, starting with the next number three meeting and go to the report and generate questions.
Very eager to go through that. Very eager to, if you're to share that with everybody too and make sure that's all, understanding that, ask good questions. And again, I don't think voting yes or no tonight stops that from happening and stops a good discussion happening, the right discussion. But that that's, again, that's my take.
We're going to have to, we're always going to figure out a way to provide services. It's just going to happen, whether it, whatever it means, increase in taxes, whoever's involved, but the subject's the name of it. I just can't get you going that name.
Well, we've been at this place for sixteen years and I think if we move forward. Then it speaks volumes to our mutual aid partners, Burnathon, that and that says that we're on board and then they'll talk about.
I mean, I'm saying it right now, I'm all board, like I'm all board. I don't necessarily think this.
Hard to find coming off, there are hard to find coming off. And then it's that step forward, like when you, when I spoke, step by step. And when I spoke, this has, this has been a very slow process. And I don't want to touch the ball. I don't know how long it's going to take, what we do. We'll be step by step.
And I'm on board with the steps, it'll be there, that's part of the steps. I I I will, again, I'm not, I guess it's not against the the direction we're going. Um, like, like, Joe said about the name, what's offered here now is the name. That one thing I can just say.
We're all in the dream of the problem is named from the other plus federal. We're all in the same vision too. And the stuff we brought right now, here's the name. Believe that is the first step right now in bringing them together, operation. The organization, I agree, we need to flesh out what that structure is going to do. Because this is not a cloud open once you create, which well, whether it's doing this thing or in. Oh, if you've got the sets, until we have this first step. He's going to, I did want to hit the call for that in corporation, but. We need to promote something more than we do that. That's what this Federal's North Fire Rescue, I'm not saying. If Bush had to change, if they need to back out, absolutely. But right now, that is the way everybody is saying they want to, you know, regarding the natural brown, that we buy.
If if Jan one is the date that we want to be operating under this new name, what is the timeframe? Like, what's the minimum amount of time we need to implement that? In order to use Jan like, have a, then we can operate under.
Do you want, so say we want to go operational January first, this Federal's North Fire Rescue Station, we're in our city. We go in here, you know, the county, and so on. What is the timeframe you need to do notify them? To allow us to operate as Station Nineteen?
It would probably take two to three months. We have like, things like reprogramming radios and so forth, which takes time. I'm sorry, we, it would probably take two to three months minimum. There's a lot of items like programming radios that have to change. We were starting to prepare for that. We were ready to go and then we held off on it. Um, I mentioned about the purchase that they're making now. That's going to be a cost to change that ever. Who's going to cover those costs? Because they can't afford to do that. So that's, that's what we're trying to build towards. But and again, we're trying to, in the long run, stop duplication. And and that's a big piece of what I'm doing in that analysis that we talked about, that you're going to hear about the next meeting, it sounds like. So so there's a lot of pieces to that puzzle, but again, it's I. My opinion is the great thing to do is to move forward with this. It's going to start to mold us together. The longer we keep it apart, we stay separated. And believe me, I come from the outside and I'm seeing it firsthand on the inside. I know what the issues are. I can see what the issues are. Again, it's it's not only about the name. There's a lot of factors that come into play. A lot of factors like response times, manpower issue. The consolidation is needed so bad. Keep us sustainable. And I'm not talking about just one or the other, both. The only way we're going to be able to survive is to come together. It's happening everywhere. It's not just here. But this is probably one of the most contentious things that every group that's been through, that has started this process, names seem to be a hard thing to get past. I wasn't bothering at the meetings or in the committee, uh, but I did hear that um. They would support some type of merging the two names together, but not Huntington Valley, but it had to be about Runathon, like Burnathon. Uh, that. Proof to that. The, yes, there is partial truth to that. Uh, at the initial meeting of all the fires, you wanted to come up front there.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry. My apologies. The uh, at the initial meeting that we had, and I had all the fire chiefs there, we had Huntington Valley, three chiefs. Then Burnathon, volunteer fire chiefs, and then Burnathon, United Chiefs. And that's where the Federal's North name was born. That's where it came out of that meeting. It was a vote taken by the group. I think there was over ten people there. And they just wanted to go in the direction of Federal's North. With LMBA being the value, which is actually what we already have as the umbrella department name. So I think that's an acceptable name to put towards one other group, which is, which is time to develop. So what do you get now in this setting? And I'm not speaking for them. I'm just saying what my take on it was. That's the backup that they would go to out of that meeting. Now again, remember, that meeting did not involve their membership. It was just the chief officers, didn't have the president there, didn't have the members there. I don't know what transpired after a chair in Huntington Valley Fire Company meeting, the LMBA was acceptable or not. I couldn't tell you that. As a chief here of all, is not his own occasion, is with. Now, with that said, the Burnathon Fire Company's position is, and correct me if I'm wrong. They wanted a fresh start. They didn't want the beginning minute appearance in the Huntington Valley, because they thought, hey, let's just start fresh and everybody's out of it and we can come together that way. And is that the one? Boy, I mean, that's what I've been told. So that's, that's where that came from. So again, I I think the LMBA was a backup to that. And that they they would accept that. And all the members don't accept that. I can tell you from being in the meetings and trying to talk to them. I was, you know, you still take, give us a long, but I think majority probably would have something like that. But I I'm not speaking of those. The way, and I'm speaking of Burnathon.
Yeah, I might make a couple of comments. I I think we're, I think we want to be careful about not mixing up a couple of things here. Uh, the name is is what we're talking about today, the name and the number. And then there's a whole bunch of other things around plan, around recommendations about how this happens. So I think, you know, from being new to this and hearing about the work that's been done over over many, many years. The studies that have been adopted, the the attempts in the past that are to try to bring this together, there is clearly, I would say, I won't speak for everyone. But I would say almost a unanimous agreement that to explore this purpose of these two fire companies to come together. Because that's really what is needed in the long run to be able to sustain the department, be able to provide the services to the residents under the standards that are expected. Having been involved most recently, with many, many of the conversations around the name, and just to keep this to the name. Personally, in listening to everything, I don't think the name, picking a name is going to get any easier tomorrow, where you're from now. We've been around this table and this this has been going on for a very long time. And listening to both fire companies, listening to the passion of the people that are involved and tradition, and I guess I'm a, I'm a traditional person. I don't think it's going to get any easier a year ago to five years from now. This is going to be a summer. And I think we're at a crossroads now. In order to move forward, in order to do all the things that we all seem to agree that we need to do, we need to establish something to be able to be told. And this is the establishment of something to be told. And I know it's, people are thrilled about it. And I guess a question, and it would be a pause for a few. If for some reason, in February, somebody comes up with this great name that everybody is unified around. And we say, look, we beg you to change it, right? We could change it, right? We could change it accordingly. Said yes?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. There'd be pause to that. We have to rebrand everything, or go through the same thing that we're going through right now. So I, my, my thought on this is, my thought on this is that this is, I think, there's a lot of questions that I still have. I know we're, we we danced around the report. There's questions that we all have around before we'll talk about that next month, the recommendations. There's a whole lot of work that has to happen. But I just don't think the name, I I under, I listened to everybody tonight and I know it's very difficult. I just don't think it's going to get any easier. If it's five years from now, like that there's, there are certain passions and feelings around it. And I sat through meetings and people said, the only thing I'm willing to accept is this. I heard others say, well, there's no way I'm going to accept that. And I think we're at a, at a spot where from a leadership team, we have to be able to do something to move forward. And it might not be the best right now, but perhaps, you know, we do this now and we continue to work on something better. We we put our creative assets together to come up with something that we could change it if we have to. You know, I know there would be a pause to it, but if it's something that everybody loves in the future, to me, it's worth, worth the cost. But I I think we have to do this today. And then I think there's a lot of very tough questions that that the residents have brought up, like there's questions that the board has, well, how do we go forward with with really integrated this? And the last comment I'm going to make is, it seems like everybody can pick up a paper, or it's Purfian Main, or some in South Hampton, or one of the other municipalities, Fox County, or Bullgrove, and I'm really, like, this is happening everywhere. And I I I talked to a couple of people in those areas. They, there were some oil in the same things that were stolen. And I don't think this is going to be, uh, I think what probably is going to be is that we were ahead sixteen years ago. It's now relative behind. But this has been going a while. I just don't think it's going to get any easier. Uh, I think we need to be able to pull, so.
Any other comments?
I actually. So my name is Ellen, Ellen, C O H E M, and my address is ten point five, on twelve, like, nine three minutes, I'm going to miss, where's my phone? I don't care if my name is the, I'll be helping fire department. When I dial nine one one, will this merger get me an ambulance if I need it?
Yes.
And if I dial nine one one because that, my house is on fire, will this allow a fire truck to come to my house?
Oh, good work.
Quicker than than than, I think the name does it, that's what the name is. Um, the Philly, well, the random school, the name's a corner, the corner it's on. Two later, they change the name to whoever it is. My concern is the taxpayer is, I dial nine one one, and this is where I live on the dark swallow, it was a lot of in Fox County, I mean, if your ass runs over. I want to know that, at least you're going to respond if I need that, the fire department is going to respond if I need them, and the ambulance is going to respond, right? I don't care what the name is. That's. Well, with the management.
Come on up, please.
My name, my name is Amanda, please, in Polo, in thirty nine twenty six, one circle. Um, I've been listening, it would not stand my stomach, listening to the discussion. And it sounds like there's so many important things involved in what you're trying to do. And to me, the list of, and the big argument is the name, or what it will be. Um, I'm not sure, I might need to be mistaken. I think it was Shakespeare. Who said, what's in a name, would arose by any other name, not smelt as sweet? Well. It's the same with what you're trying to do. Why can't, I I mean, I don't care if it says Huntington Valley or what. But what is the difference? I mean. But what is the difference? I mean, as long as you provide services to the people that will be involved in it. What difference is? It named in a who or what township? What neighborhood? It doesn't matter to the residents, as I think that was what I was saying. As long as, and I can't complain about any of the services I've lived in my house since nineteen seventy. The police are on their fault. The uh the N T's of the emergency. Yes. They were in my house a long time. Anyhow, every, all the people who work for the township are terrific. And if it was a different name, it would still be terrific. Uh I'm a retired school teacher. And this reminds me that I remember my elementary, when kids argue. Uh I have better sneakers than you. Why not my sneakers? You're better. Or I was first in line. No, I was first in line. What is this all about? It seems so simple. And if it's not broken, why fix it? I mean, I'm perfectly happy with it being called Huntington Valley. If you want to change it, change it, but do it. Why? And what is the main deal about anything? As long as you have the same people and are terrific. I love, as I said, I've had some encounters with the police, not for anything more. But I'm gonna just tell you a quick story. A quick, uh, a few years ago, I got a call back from nine one one. They said. That I called nine one one. I said, no, I didn't. There's nothing wrong here. So uh and they said, okay, they're gonna cancel it. Then, well, you know, the police showed up at my door. I said, well, they canceled. We just wanted to make sure you were okay. So that's how good our services are. And as I said, Huntington Valley is fine. What is it? A hundred and some years, you said, or? Well, it seems to work so far, so why change it? But if you want to do it, like, what is the main deal is all I wanna know.
So just to clarify, right now, we have two enemies. We have Huntington Valley Fire, which does fire. We have Branneton Fire Company, which does fire EMS. But they also provide all the ambulance service for long term. So what we're trying to do is take both those companies and bring them together. That's why they're looking for you.
Well, we're all neighbors, so does anybody care?
Yes, I'm probably the swing though. I mean, I didn't know how everybody else felt, but um. It's, you know, there's not a lot in the name. I actually don't care myself either. The reason, the only reason I care is because I don't want to destroy morale amongst our own. And Chief is aware of that. And Huntington Valley is aware of that. You know, it's something that we're very worried about. And, you know, but.
Have you seen that happen?
I have, well, they told you themselves, there was a split vote on whether we should change the name amongst the fire members themselves in Huntington Valley. So I know that there are some people in the Huntington Valley Fire Company that are very angry about the changing the name. But I also know that the leadership of the Huntington Valley Fire Company, that they have put in place. They themselves have voted these people in place, have approved these changes. Well, I think that I'm gonna ready.
Stop fighting like children. I feel like I'm back in the classroom.
I appreciate your comments, man. Sir, come on up.
I'll say here, it's a quick question. Is that?
Dress first one.
Red Jonas thirty nine twenty nine Sheffield Drive.
Go ahead.
Uh is the ambulance service readily open?
No, it's five oh one C three provided through Branneton Fire Company.
Okay. Do we know a lot of private, must say?
Yes, they're not.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, sir. You can come on up.
Sitting.
Where do I tell my wife? Michael Wobberman nine seven eight Sheffield Lane. This is my first commissioner's meeting, so I don't, didn't know anything about what was just discussed. I see two problems. There's no plan. There's no concrete plan. All are talking about it. The name is intellectual, pardon. The plan is intellectual. The name is emotion. And we all sort of agreed consolidation was how everybody, period. Okay. The name should not be an impediment to going forward, not a plan. I don't know anything about the plan. All I heard was it's been in the process for decades. It's not really how the plan should work. Right? We have to divorce the name. We're just wasting all this time about talking about the name. Get the thing started with the temporary thing. And have to work on the in, on the emotional aspect of whatever the name, the consolidation costs. Cause that's really important. You said the morale. Okay, great. We can call nine one. Yeah, we'll be right there. That's not gonna happen. Maybe. You get what I'm saying. Okay, you have to have that. Okay, this is a selfless job. Okay, a totally selfless job. They run to pop their problems. You know, we run away. Okay, so you have to have.
Yeah, they're here.
Thank you, somewhat. But we have to solve the emotional problem as well. But not let the plan fall behind. What they said, you, like he said before, you wanna seize the, a plan's finance, all you're gonna do, this doesn't have to be down to the detail. But at least something that we can wrap our teeth around and figure out, okay, yeah, this looks good. Or not, if I have third of the day next month. But they're two separate issues. It's April days, and it's four times when we spend on the plan. Pretty. And.
You mean, table the name, talk so the plan comes up? Yep.
Any other comments wrong? Go ahead, sorry.
Sorry.
They're not here then?
No. Not grand thirty five eighty three. I don't understand his meaning at all. I'm a businessman. What's the cost of the uniform? What's the cost of doing this whole thing? Decals on the trucks. Where is the budget? I'm a businessman. We don't make a decision until we see a budget. You gotta fight over it. No budget? What's gonna happen? What's it gonna cost the seniors in this town, just tax wise? Are we gonna put a few hot guys on here? What's our budget? So what's our tax increase? Before we move forward.
So you're taking three different things. Right now, we already have full-time personnel at Branneton Fire Company. Typically have three guys on twenty four seven during the daytime. There's a five seven, you know, that okay. It's supplement above volunteer. Huntington Valley Fire Company volunteers during the daytime, they have anywhere three or five second person. So we already have a combination of volunteer and full-time workers there. And we have those budgets which happen.
They're already funded now, right?
Exactly. And well, the building's looking to bring them together. So we already do have the raw budget numbers on those.
Where are they?
And they're in our budget right now. You can look at it, operating budget of Branneton Fire Company, and also for Huntington Valley Fire Company.
Are you, are we having to do trucks coming in in the next few weeks? That's why the name on the gun, sir, I'm sorry, one. I'm not that. Next few weeks. So that's why they need a name. It's coming in. They wanna keep them out for the days. So that's the main reason, though.
No, the main reason is bringing the two companies together and getting that operation.
They were confusing your life. We all have a bit, what's going on between Dylan and.
Yeah, the name on the trucks is important, but the real reason is bringing the two companies together under one different national name, it's operation is one, for them to begin doing this.
So if you want to hide in the valley.
So Huntington Valley is one, they provide secondary fire service, the lone one township. You know, Branneton Fire Company, which is our favorite parts, they provide secondary fire. Finering EMS for all lone one township. We're trying to bring them together to operate as one. That's why Branneton would prefer a fresh start, one area, one name. Your other option is lone one township, Branneton, borough of Fire Rescue. That's that home, which we already have in place. That Chief Showmaker falls on his cover. There's an N O U in place. If this is a D P A. Would be an operational D P A system. And the cost associated with the unit here and everything else, as you said, there is a cost of that. Right now, I thought if we were gonna go out and bring letter, everything on every truck, I would have that number for. My estimate, I'm just gonna take a wild guess of this. It's probably on sixty thousand, fifty thousand.
You all that. Beginning of the meeting, you said we need a new general.
Well, that was your ashes and so on. He has a task in Trish McCurran, as Chief Showmaker. That would be something down the line. It's all based there over time. It's not gonna be one lump sum of costs that gets sunk on all the tax.
One last question. Will the taxpayers in this community have a vote on this? Vote on the decisions, the name, the budget? No. And that's what we're here for. You represent you guys. Thank you for your time, though.
Thanks very much. Any other questions?
Sure, I just have one question, but it'll be less than three minutes. You said, just as maybe costs is about sixty, seven thousand and change the numbers and everything. Is that gonna be a split between the borough and?
As I get, as I stated there, that was a rough.
I took a rough guess. Yeah, that's I, that's what I said, a rough guess. Is that going to be split evenly, or is it going to be a seventy five, twenty five cost?
Both organizations.
Easily?
Well, they have the reserves of Huntington Valley.
Right.
So I would say yes.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the room? No. Any other comments in general? Just gonna say a handout.
That's still all right.
No, I put it. Um I've asked her. She might have walked away from that computer.
All right, any other comments from the mentions? No. No response online, no additional hands, nothing else in me. I'm gonna make a motion to support Federalistville Fire Rescue as the future fire and EMS entity name. Going forward, in terms of these decisions. Move in second.
Mention, move in second to support Federalistville Fire Rescue as the future fire EMS entity name. If all of them favor, please signify the same time.
All right.
I was here all along. Can I just make one last comment that has nothing to do with the vote?
Uh Ward one, Commissioner House. Uh Ward two, Commissioner Hayes.
No.
Ward three, Commissioner Lang.
Yeah.
Ward four, Commissioner Powell.
Yeah.
Ward five, Commissioner Mueller.
Yes.
And Ward six, Commissioner Hurd.
Yes.
So that's Ward is two, we're.
So hopefully, they'll relax. The next one is the Branneton Fire Company Ambulance File Program. Force twenty twenty four ambulance EMS budget included increased annual funding to Branneton Fire Company, two hundred thousand. The purpose was to use the additional funds to pilot two operational concepts for a second ambulance. To provide increased service below loan. The additional hundred and ten thousand was going to be insufficient to fund the program for the whole unit. Therefore, the board increased the mileage generated two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. If the program was deemed to be successful, the board could then authorize the release of the additional sixty five thousand. To fund the program through the remainder of twenty twenty four. Based on the pilot program results, Chief Showmaker and I are recommending the board authorize an additional sixty five thousand. This will reallocate the funds from the ambulance, ambulance EMS fund, capital zero. To the Branneton Fire Company Contribution Board's ambulance services. Comments from the board?
I, I'm gonna check in or hear. Um whether this pilot program is successful.
Certainly, two emails right after, right? We'll have more in the summary, but.
No, I'm not.
That deserves some better information.
Absolutely. Well, I apologize to the board. You know, we look at these numbers, we look at them from the mainstream, and we don't. It registers, so I said, well, proceed on the stat to come out. However, we should work clearer for what the actual numbers are. As you recall, back at the last budget session, it was like starting, we Branneton Fire Company Ambulance came in. And was asking for this pilot program with this additional funds to put the second ambulance up. To cover when the first ambulance was out on calls. We were realizing there was a number of emergency calls that came in after that, which we call on another call or a second calls. So last year, I think we ran about ninety nine, which is the number that we were looking at that night. At this year, as of seven thirty one, so the first half. We're at fifty one total dispatches. So we're anticipating somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and ten for this year. We broke this study down into two parts. One was the first year where we kept the second ambulances. In lone one, Branneton, Borough, the fall. The second part of the study was, and still a government discipline is not completed. Will be, that ambulance would be available for any calls we could dispatch, whether they're in the lone or outside of the urban subway area. With that said, the numbers that we have said for, I'm gonna read it to you real quick for the sake of time. There was fifty one total dispatches for the first part of the study. Out of the fifty one, forty seven of them were in lone one, Branneton. That's, that's the number. It's a second call coming in at the same time as the first call. Four of the calls were outside of lone one, Branneton. Out of those fifty one calls, thirty eight of those calls were transported and we consider hospitals. That were putting alone one, Branneton calls, and two were transported from the calls outside. So that's the numbers that go along. So that's pretty substantial numbers when you look at it. Overall, our call volumes up. We're probably gonna be looking at somewhere in the area of twenty to one eighty five, we have our calls this coming year, or this will probably flow out this year. That's up quite a bit from when it was. But these things all generate costs. And again. It's hard for us to give the financials because financially it won't be realized until next year because of the Medicaid and the buildings, it's not how it works. But we did some estimation on it, on this thirty eight transported call. And it's estimated, we just took an average of four fifty a call of what we can accomplish is really very low. For what the expenses are, and I came out and said, we found one hundred, that's an estimated amount for that second ambulance being called. And more, you also have a. You have a fire that's gonna help in that second. Sure. What happens is, you know, the extra man pedal on, it also affords us the ability to have additional fire personnel if there's not an ambulance call. In other words. It's the first thing we do then on call. We have crew standing by, the next crew, depending whether it's a fire or a medical emergency, they can handle even one of those who kind of sits that one. So it's benefit to having that enhanced with our fire too, which will be part of the big planning process that everybody wants to hear about. We're looking at that now. Um again, the numbers I'm gonna show you next month. We'll show you what our our manpower and response time issues are. And how are we gonna achieve, get there with the recommended days that are gonna be there. Put forward to show you what it's gonna cost to be. And again, it's, you know, he decided it's it's additional cost of it being involved. What's the level of protection is that we want our residents to have, because that's hard to put price at.
Perhaps if you were a thing, still ready to ask another question.
So, but the bottom line is, it was somewhere over forty people would would have to have been served by people outside. By private.
Oh, yeah, to me, coming in to cover us. Oh, it's like, we have that second ambulance up, that means they're coming from another community. We're pulling their resource in then. So this gives us the best resource allocation with money we're spending on. And again, it's it's hard. EMS right now is in just as bad a shape as fire. It's hard buying people. Coming to these jobs that we're offering. And it's also difficult to cover the amount of calls that we're getting. You know, everybody calls an ambulance for everything, and rightfully so. Some are more legitimate than others, but when they call, we have to. Some are more legitimate than others, but when they call, we have to respond. And when we respond, there's a cost associated with that, whether or not we transport that patient or not. We're going to spend money going to that call, and it's not cheap. See, government response times also, when it's in humanity, it's probably upon the way it grow, and seeing ninety percent of the time, less than eight minutes, and those are our shifts. Whether it's outside the usual eight, I'm going to say for those thirty-eight, we have to go for thirty minutes. Our guys here in there, they could be thirteen, yeah, fourteen minutes plus, putting outside agents and coming to the south end and a couple of them. So we've gone as far as our ambulance going out, over into personal counsel, but I can't recall, that's how bad the situation is. We went over to handle her, we cover up in the Appington, but they also come here and cover if ours were, you know, we've been three tier deep on calls tonight. So we don't have resources, they have to come in and assist them. And then you count the fire service hours, but, but our usual eight going now is much greater than helping to see the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, you know, you're the only. Any other, I hope that answers your question. Definitely, the value is there, it was the purpose, so that extra money that we're asking will be released, it might change the value of things, and there's nothing to why.
Well, our responsibility is to provide if we have to. Fire and what we can have for, but we sort of, I think the second ambulance is proven to be. The thing for.
Any other comments?
Um, some, some of, some of the breakdown is seven.